Meeting is called to order. Can we have the roll?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strike.
Yes.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Brian Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Aaron O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Thank you.
And next item on the agenda is the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Don't move. Spinelli.
Move by Commissioner Spinelli and seconded by Commissioner Gardner on chat. Any objection? Seeing no objection, the minutes are approved. Moving on to special order of business disclosures. Commissioner Strike, do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures to make.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing to disclose.
Commissioner Anderson.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anderson, I believe you mentioned possible disclosure over email. Is that no longer the case?
That's for next week's cases.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Looney.
You bet.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Winchester.
No disclosures.
And I too have no disclosures. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved by Commissioner Strike.
Moved by Commissioner Strike, seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Any objection? Seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to our public hearings, case 2020-0120. Staff, can we have a report?
Thank you. The U-Haul Company of Alaska is requesting to rezone tract A, O'Neill subdivision, from B3 general business to I1 light industrial and intends to develop the property of the U-Box facility. A U-Box facility is used for the short-term storage of U-Haul storage containers that consumers rent for the purpose of moving items to and from locations across the US and North America. The location of the parcel subject to the rezone request is shown in Figure 1 on the staff report and Figure 2 provides an aerial overview of adjacent land uses. A community meeting was held remotely via Zoom on July 22, 2020 by the applicant. Two residents attended the meeting and both expressed support for the requested rezone. A full summary of the community meeting is available in the application attachment number one. For community comments for this public hearing, 220 public hearing notices were mailed on August 28, 2020. However, no comments on the rezoning application were received from the public or the community For departmental comments, none of the reviewing agencies objected to the rezone and again, full comments are available in attachment number three of the report. Looking at findings, for criteria number one for rezonings, the rezoning shall be in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and shall promote the public health, safety and general welfare. The proposed rezoning is in the best interest of the citizens of Anchorage and shall promote the public health, safety and general welfare by expanding industrial lands and industrial development opportunities in accordance with the comprehensive plan. To be successful, industrial uses require specific types of infrastructure and locations that are compatible with adjacent uses. Expanding the I-1 zoning district in this area would be beneficial due to the site's accessibility to a Class III major arterial, Boniface Parkway, and its direct access to a freeway, the Glen Highway, the availability of municipal water and sewer, and the compatibility of adjacent industrial uses and zoning. Two, the rezoning complies with and conforms the comprehensive plan, including the comprehensive plan maps. As shown in Figure 3 of the staff report, the subject parcel's land use designation according to the Anchorage 2040 land use plan map is light industrial/commercial. Per the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, one of the implementing zoning districts for the light industrial/commercial land use designation is the I-1 light industrial district. From this perspective, the proposed rezoning complies with the comp plan and the comprehensive plan map. By rezoning the parcel from B3 to I-1, the proposed rezoning would remove the possibility of commercial uses encroaching into lands appropriate for commercial use, thereby directly supporting 2040 land use plan policy 9.2. Three, the rezoning is generally consistent with the zoning district purpose and the requested zone and the purpose of this title. Per Anchorage Municipal Code, the I-1 light industrial district is intended primarily for public and private, light and general manufacturing, processing, service, storage, wholesale and distribution operations, along with other uses that support and/or are compatible with industrial uses. And it is applied in areas designated as industrial/commercial by the comp plan. And this description matches with the context of the proposed rezoning. The purpose of this title, Title 21, is outlined in Anchorage Municipal Code 21.01.030A through L. And from that list, the proposed rezoning specifically promotes subsections A, C, E and K. Number four, the rezoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning and development and protects areas designated for specific uses on the zoning map from incompatible land uses or development intensities. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding zoning and development, which is primarily B3 general business and I-1 light industrial. Figures 1 and 2 in the staff report again show nearby residential uses in R1 single-family, R3 mixed residential, and R4 multifamily residential zoning districts. However, the R1 district and residential uses are separated from the proposed I-1 light industrial district by a Class III major arterial. And the R3 and R4 districts are buffered through special limitations on the adjacent I-1 zoning district. Criteria in five, facilities and services, including roads and transportation, water, gas, et cetera, are capable of supporting the uses allowed by the zone or will be capable by the time the development is complete while maintaining adequate levels of service to existing development. The location of the proposed I-1 light industrial district is an area in which all public utilities are available, for example sewer, water, gas and electric, and that has access to a Class II major arterial and direct access to a freeway for the heavy vehicle trips the site will likely generate. And it is also located within the police, fire and building safety service areas. Six, the rezoning is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts. The uses allowed in the I-1 light industrial district typically result in environmental impacts that are greater than uses allowed in many commercially or residentially zoned districts. As discussed in Criteria 4 and 5, however, the proposed I-1 zoning district is in an area that both reduces impacts to neighboring properties and takes advantage of infrastructure that is suited for industrial uses. Seven, the proposed rezoning is not likely to result in significant adverse impacts upon adjacent land uses or such impacts shall be mitigated through stipulations. Again, per Criteria 2 and 3, the proposed rezoning is consistent with the comp plan and the purpose of the I-1 zoning district, which both require the location of industrial zoning districts and land use designations to occur in areas that take advantage of existing infrastructure and minimize potential for significant impacts to surrounding properties. Eight, the rezone does not extend or exacerbate a land use pattern that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. The proposed rezoning does not extend or exacerbate those patterns. The rezoning from B3 to I-1 expands industrial zoned lands in an area that is designated for industrial uses per the Anchorage 2040 land use plan. And finally, nine, the rezoning shall not result in a split zone lot. The proposed rezoning conforms to existing lot lines and would not create a split zone lot. With that being said, the department finds that all nine approval criteria for a rezone are met and recommends approval of the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to questions from the commission, I would like to just mention the public hearing procedures. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules or procedures. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils and PTAs will receive 5 minutes. Individuals will receive 3 minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to the action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk within 20 days after their approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff? Seeing no questions for the staff, can we-
Commissioners, Commissioner Strike does. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Oh, Commissioner Strike, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. To the staff and to the chair, this particular piece of property, you identified it as a island zoning. And so my question is, can you identify what if any prior zoning actions have taken place on this particular property and/or directly adjacent properties? Say in the last 10 years, have there been any?
So I don't have the record of the past rezonings. It's currently B3, but I am not aware of rezonings within the past 10 years. I could find that out and come back to the commission at a later date, but I don't have that information in front of me.
What I'm trying to ascertain is whether or not this property has been before this body, any time, for example, in the past 10 years where it might have been rezoned once already, say to the existing B3? Or has it always been B3?
I can't answer that question right now.
Okay. The other question I have is, as a result of a island zoning, we have property that I believe directly to the north, which I believe is zone B3. And so do we expect to see other zoning changes to happen to adjacent properties now or in the near future, possibly as a result of now circling B3 properties now with industrial if this were to pass?
So the immediate area is designated in the Anchorage 2040 land use plan for industrial and commercial and, well, sorry, light industrial manufacturing. So it's reasonable to expect that future rezonings, at least ones that are supported by the department, would be in the direction of industrial zoning. But I don't have any information on other applicants or properties that are considering rezonings.
Well, then maybe you can explain the term island zoning, because that would imply the areas surrounding this piece of property have a different zoning.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention the term island zoning. It was I-1 light industrial.
Okay, my mistake then by interpreting that. Does the current, one last question, does the current anticipated use, is that precluded in a B3 zoning?
Yes, so part of the reason the applicant, as far as I understand, is seeking to rezone to I-1 light industrial is so that their planned use should be allowed in the zoning
So that's affirmative, that the planned use that they have is not allowed in B3 now?
Correct.
Do we know how that property is currently being used?
It's currently vacant land.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions for staff, can we hear from the petitioner?
Yes, thank you and good evening commissioners. Through the chair, this is Taryn, P-A-R-Y-N, Ole-Son-Y-E-L-L-E, and I'm a planner with R&amp;M Consultants and we're representing this project today. I'm here with John Norris, who's our project manager of U-Haul, and Juan Lee, also of R&amp;M Consultants. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for their very thorough review of our case and we conclude with their analysis. As Colin stated, U-Haul is seeking to rezon the currently vacant property from B3 general commercial to I-1 light industrial. This rezone is in response to a planning department use determination that concluded that the proposed use of the property for the U-Box facility is considered a warehouse or wholesale establishment. Warehouses are not permitted in the B3 district, but is permitted by right use in the light industrial district and thus this case is for you tonight. So the proposed use of the U-Box facility is compatible with adjacent existing uses. So to the north of this property is an existing storage use. There's a Serenity Midy storage facility that's developed immediately adjacent to the north of this vacant property. To the north and northeast, there actually is an adjacent I-1 zoned property, and this one is also owned by U-Haul and is currently being used as a warehouse. To the south, we have a B3 zoned lot that's currently commercial and being used for a bar. And then to the west, across, like Colin said, the Class III major arterial of Boniface Parkway, we do have residential uses on the west side of Boniface Parkway. But from that, there is sufficient buffering from these adjacent uses in the transportation corridor that is Boniface Parkway that separates the proposed industrial zoned land from any residential lot. As Colin stated, the proposed I-1 zoning district is supported by the 2040 land use plan map and is also supported by the East Anchorage District Plan. Both of these plans have designated the existing vacant parcel and those adjacent to it for industrial uses. That support from these essential guiding planning documents means this rezone is not only compatible now, but will ideally remain so in the future. So with that, I thank you for your time and consideration of the rezone and I'm happy to answer any questions and yield the remainder of my time. Thank you.
Any questions for the petitioner? I see no questions in the queue. Do we have any members of the public wishing to testify? It appears that we do not have any members of the public wishing to testify. So back to the petitioner, do you have any time you would like to, would you like to use any of your remaining time? I believe you have 7 minutes and 25 seconds.
No, that's all right. I think we've said everything we need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, what is the will of the body? We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Krishna and a second by Commissioner Winchester. Commissioner Krishna, would you like to speak to your motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion in the case, in the matter of case 2020-0120, request to rezone two acres from B3 general business to I-1 light industrial. I move to approve.
And would you like to speak to your motion before moving on to one of the other commissioners?
Sure, I will. Generally, the findings in the staff packet show that this rezoning is sort of compatible with the Anchorage 2040 comprehensive plan and land use plan map, as well as the East Anchorage District Plan. There are several I-1 zone parcels nearby and the proposed use would require this zoning change.
Would anyone else like to speak to the motion at this time? Then I will chime in and say that it was also found that two residents attended the community council meeting remotely and they both expressed support for the requested rezone. In addition, 220 public hearing notices were mailed out and there were no comments on the rezoning, seeing as how there tends to be approval from the community members who did speak out and no objections from any other community members. It appears that there is public support for this rezone. I'd also like to point out that while there is existing B3 to the north of this parcel, there is current, make sure I get this correct, I-1 industrial to the south and also to the east, which would make, converting this, doing a rezone to an I-1 would make sense as well. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion before we call for a vote? All right, can we call for a vote? Commissioner Strike.
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn.
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I also vote in the affirmative. And that motion passes. Like to thank the petitioner for their time. Moving on to, I believe it's case 2020-0122. Staff, can we have the report?
The planning department is recommending a text amendment to Title 21 that would allow fences enclosing electrical utility substations to be constructed up to 10 feet high. Per AMC 2107080H3, the current height limit for any fence is 8 feet throughout the municipality. Utility providers have regularly requested in recent years a fence height of 10 feet for electrical utility substitution closers in order to comply with the National Electric Safety Code, NESC. This has resulted in these substations requiring both a design variance for the fence height and an administrative or major site plan review for the facility layout. The NESC recommends a height of 7 feet for electrical utility substitution closers to prevent unauthorized access, preserve public safety and minimize power interruptions. Being a winter city, snowberms in Anchorage regularly exceed a height of 1 foot, which can result in effective fence heights of less than 7 feet. This situation may prevent electrical utility substations from complying with the NESC fence height recommendations, which could lead to security risks and leave electrical utility substations vulnerable. This proposed text amendment would achieve two things. One, allow fences enclosing an electrical utility substation to be up to 10 feet in height by right, thereby conforming to NESC recommendations and eliminating a duplicative entitlement review for those facilities. Two, promote better fence design practices for taller fences by requiring that any fence over 8 feet built pursuant to this text amendment be designed as an ornamental fence. When analyzing a text amendment, Anchorage Municipal Code requires that amendment to be reviewed against the approval criteria in AMC 2103210C. And those are three approval criteria as follows. One, the proposed amendment will promote the public health, safety and general welfare. The proposed text amendment would allow fences enclosing electrical utility substation to be up to 10 feet high by right, provided that the higher fence is constructed to meet the definition of an ornamental fence per Anchorage Municipal Code. This promotes the public health, safety and general welfare by allowing fences enclosing electrical utility substations to comply with the NESC without obtaining a design variance, while at the same time ensuring that those taking advantage of this new allowance are designed in a way in residential districts that does not adversely impact neighboring properties. Two, the proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the stated purpose of this title. The proposed text amendment is consistent with the purpose of this title. It is consistent through enabling a more streamlined approval process for electrical utility fences and thereby, quote, "encouraging this efficient use of existing infrastructure and the available land supply in municipality," end quote, and also by, quote, "promoting development patterns and site designs that protect and enhance the surrounding community character and a variety of appealing and distinctive neighborhoods," end quote. And those two citations are from Anchorage Municipal Code in the purpose of this title. And the proposed text amendment conforms with the policy 7.2 of the Anchorage 2040 land use plan, which states the necessity to, quote, "ease the transitions between more intensive land uses and adjacent lower density neighborhoods in terms of the built scale, height, level of activity and character," end quote. This policy is particularly relevant due to the location of many electrical substations within and adjacent to the neighborhoods they serve regardless of density or activity levels. While this is desirable and necessary from a service perspective, it can result in situations where the intensity of the electrical substation conflicts with the character of the surrounding neighborhood. This is especially the case with the increasing size and complexity of electrical utility substations, which as they reach the end of their useful life are being redeveloped into larger facilities throughout the municipality in order to meet evolving electrical safety and service standards. With that being said, the department agrees with the utilities' comments, which are provided as part of this packet, that the ornamental fence requirement in the proposed text amendment may not be suited to industrial or commercial areas. Requiring an ornamental fence surrounding an electrical utility substation in industrial commercial areas would also not be consistent with policy 7.2 of the 2040 land use plan or the purpose of this title as cited above. Therefore, the department recommends that proposed text amendment apply only to electrical utility substations within or abutting a residential zone. The department also agrees with the utilities' comment regarding the need for gates on all the electrical utility substations to be constructed using different components potentially than the stationary portions of the fence in order to reduce wear and tear, provide their grounding and ensure safety and security by complying with the Institute of Electrical and Electronics Engineers and Occupational Safety and Health Administration standards. These recommended changes to the proposed text amendment are incorporated in the recommendations section of this memo. Finally, three, the proposed amendment is necessary or desirable because of changing conditions, new planning concepts or other social or economic conditions. As mentioned earlier, public utilities have been redeveloping electrical utility substations throughout Anchorage in recent years due to the age of the facilities and the need for safety, capacity and security upgrades. Most of these electrical substations that have been redeveloped have been proposing 10-foot fences as part of the upgraded facilities to comply with NESC standards. So this proposed text amendment would respond to these changing conditions by requiring only one review process for electrical utility substations that construct 10-foot fences and conform to ornamental fence standards for the stationary portion of those fences when abutting or within residential zoning districts. This will streamline the permitting process for many new and upgraded electrical utility substations while protecting residential districts from adverse impacts. And even though an administrative site plan review or conditional use review is required for new or significantly upgraded electrical utility substations, a substation could still replace a fence alone without going through a review process. This is possible to contribute to the importance of the ornamental fence requirement for residential districts. And I would also note that fences above 8 feet that do not adhere to the ornamental fence standard in residential districts would still be possible through a variance, the same type of variance that the substations often have to go through today for increased fence height. And considering all this, the department recommends approval of the text amendment. This approval is subject to the recommended changes on page 4 of the staff report, which are in response to comments from public utilities. I would also add that one thing I would like to note about the corrections, I would, so where it reads on subsection 3G in bold, "if the electrical utility substation abuts a residential zoning district, all stationary sections of fences," and it continues, I would like to include something along the lines of, "if the electrical utility substation abuts or is within a residential zoning district, all stationary sections, et cetera." This is because currently the recommended change only states that abutting residential districts are affected, but just for clarity, I might like to add something stating within if that, the commission agrees with that, that change. So with that being said, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
This is Steph, I have a question.
Go ahead.
In the section of the code that talks about maximum fence height, there's an item E that says fences in front setbacks in non-residential districts shall be located interior to any required landscaping. I was wondering if that should be applied to the new section G in some way?
I believe that will be applied to the, it would not be exempt. It would be listed within the, it would be a subsection, a new subsection within the fence code and it would apply just like, to that district, just like any others.
Okay. Just the way I read through this section under maximum height, item 3, it has items A through G, and the new G says that the fences enclosing the utility substation shall be exempt from the other height restrictions, which means to me all of A through F wouldn't
I'll take a look at that if you give me a moment.
Any other questions for staff?
This is Commissioner Strike.
Go ahead.
Thank you and through the chair. I understand that we're here this evening on this discussion as a result of the- the substation utilities looking to increase the height of the fences to be compliant with the NESC. So the concern I have is that we're going into Title 21 and dealing with fence height where I'm not so sure that, I want to make sure that we capture the other elements of the NESC, that we don't abandon those requirements of that code. And so my question is kind of just out there. Why isn't substation utilities handled separately in its own subsection? For example, under Title 21, as opposed to the standard fencing that would go around? Because there are a number of other requirements for these types of fences that are covered in the NESC. And my concern is that we're abandoning or we're missing maybe some of the other NESC requirements because we're, Title 21 now is this code is overriding those other requirements. And for example, non-climbable fences, NESC also puts in some cases concertina wire, or they put a barrier at the top of the fences to prevent folks from climbing over. And chain link fence, I believe, under NESC isn't even allowed. So there's a number of other code requirements in the NESC that seem to not be captured here at all. All we seem to be addressing is putting a Band-Aid on Title 21 and saying now 10-foot fences are allowed. And then putting a definition that ornamental are allowable in adjacent or in the subdivision areas. And in fact, the definition ornamental is decorative and for screening purposes. NESC speaks not to ornamental but to safety and protection. So we have a bit of a conflict in those two definitions.
All right, so the reason that we brought forward, that the Planning Department is bringing forward this specific amendment to Title 21 is because the fence height, the fence height limit in Title 21 of 8 feet is the only provision in Title 21 of any sort that the utilities have found to be conflicting in any way with the NESC. Nothing that the NESC requires, to our or the utilities' knowledge, I believe, prevents the utilities from following the NESC in its entirety. So the reason that we are, we have this amendment in front of us is because this has been the only identified issue in Title 21 as something that is preventing or making it more difficult substantially for the utilities to comply with the NESC. And even today, the utilities can still comply with the NESC through a design variance. The intent of this is to reduce, in most cases, the permit requirements for a fence height that is becoming routine and is something that utilities are commonly engaging in and constructing. As for the definition, so the definition of the ornamental fence in Title 21 states, "For decorative purposes, although it may also serve other purposes such as screening." There's nothing that precludes an ornamental fence from serving a purpose to enclose and protect an electrical utility substation. I hope I addressed all your points. Let me know if I missed something.
You did, but I guess my biggest concern is the safety aspect of having a non-climbing fence. And so now we're getting into the type of fence, and I believe the NESC does address non-climbing fences, but we see, when I drive by many of the areas around town, I do see chain link fences. So it makes me wonder if the those fences are even NESC code compliant.
No, those are good points. So the Title 21 is not intended to be something that is requiring certain elements for fences in electrical utility substations that would then conform with the NESC. The closest the Anchorage Municipal Code in general gets to regulating the fences of electrical utility substations could be through, for example, the Development Services Department or Title 23. It actually, by reference, incorporates the NEC, which is National Electric Code. I know this is slightly different from the NESC, but Anchorage Municipal Code does reference that guide, but it does not reference the NESC. So the NESC is something that utility substations or the utility providers either are following voluntarily or are following in order to receive funding or something similar. And they do that with their own accord, and that's not part of Anchorage Municipal Code. So the intent of this amendment is to make it simpler for the utilities in most circumstances to comply with the safety standards that have been set up for their industry.
So the city is not involved in ensuring that the code for the NESC or NEFC is being followed just at the height of the fence as it might meet Municipal Code is being adhered to? Is what I'm hearing, and so we're relying upon the utilities to use their judgment as to what the NEFC code or NEFC code is being followed? And I guess my point is, I'm just concerned that we're using Title 21 here where in fact that it seems like it almost deserves its own subsection or section in the code because it is a different animal. It does, you know, we don't use the term ornamental in anywhere in the NEFC code or NEFC or NEFC code, yet now we're applying it. We're going to apply a new term, ornamental, ornamental that I think misses the boat here as far as as a municipality we should be adhering to and requiring so that we don't, you know, some kid gets caught climbing over a fence and we point back to the code and says, "Well, it was an ornamental fence." And, "Yeah, it was 10 feet high." It wasn't designed to be secured. It was designed to be, look good for the neighborhood. That's not the story I want to hear come out down the road. I want to hear that we put together or we have in code a program that is safe, secure, purpose here, and ornamental is absolutely secondary outside of the vocabulary here. That's my concern. And I'm done.
And to respond to that briefly, the the ornamental fence standard does not preclude the construction of, for example, concertina wire. You know, that is allowed to be used for security purposes in conjunction with ornamental fence. There's nothing in code that precludes that. And it's, you know, the NESC, again, these standards are intended in Title 21 for fences in general. And there's nothing in Title 21 in the fence subsection that is meant to be specifically applied to electrical utility substations except for this provision that allows utilities to exceed the fence height, which is in place specifically for protecting neighboring residents and uses. And so the ornamental fence requirement in the context of that subsection is intended to provide residential zoning districts with a level of assurance that if a 10-foot fence, which is quite high, is constructed by right in their neighborhoods, then there will be a different aesthetic standard versus if a fence were constructed up to the existing 8-foot code allowance, then, you know, that ornamental fence standard would not be required because, again, 10 feet is, in essence, an exemption from the existing fence height standard. And the fence height subsection or the fence height section in Chapter 7 exists in large part to protect residents and neighboring uses. So that's why we feel it's appropriate in this case.
As a follow-up question, just for clarity. So what you're saying is that an ornamental fence doesn't preclude the safety measures of the NESC. However, what it does preclude is a chain link specifically fence.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gardner?
Thank you. Do you have a sense of how what significant this ornamental requirement will be in terms of either as percentage or total numbers of substations that would be subject to it by abutting or likely being within a residential zoning district?
I do not. However, I would like to note again that if there is a electrical utility substation that wishes to construct a 10-foot fence that is not ornamental in nature, they do still, would still have the ability to do that. We're not precluding any utility from not constructing a 10-foot high fence that is not ornamental. They would just have to go through the same variance process they are going through today. It's intended just in commercial and industrial districts, particularly, you know, allow only one entitlement to be pursued. And then in residential districts, only one entitlement where the ornamental fence is provided.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions in the queue, we do have a member from the public who wishes to speak on this matter. Can we get them on the phone?
Good evening. Is this Peyton Reed?
Yes, this is Peyton.
Peyton, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission calling for your testimony in case 2020-0122. Are you testifying as an individual or representative of a group?
I'm representing Chugatch Electric.
Okay, great. You'll have five minutes to testify. At the conclusion of your testimony, the commission may ask you questions. If there are no questions, the phone call will end. If you're ready, you may begin your testimony now.
Hello. My name is Peyton Reed. I am a planning engineer with Chugatch Electric. I want to say thank you to everyone at the commission and from the Planning and Zoning Department, Colin, thank you. I appreciate the effort you took to note our comments in your staff report. I'm here to speak a little bit about safety and substations and fences. So I meant, we talked about this a little bit in our comments back to Colin, but safety is the number one priority with substation fences. Not just keeping people out, but substation fences are actually a part of the ground grid that keeps substations safe for the personnel that work in the stations when they're there and for the people who are around the stations. But is, safety is our number one priority. Then we also commented on how decorative fences can be difficult to maintain and repair. And to be honest, they are a lot more expensive than a chain link fence is. I looked into this and a decorative fence can double or triple the cost of a chain link fence. And Chugatch is a not-for-profit utility. The costs for substation fences don't come out of profits. They come out of our members' pockets when we have to put in a more expensive fence. And that concerns us because our priority is safety and our consumers. So there is that. And one of the things I heard mentioned before in the discussion between commissioners was safety of chain link fences and those possibly being excluded by the NESC. That is, I'm sorry to say, incorrect. Chain link fences are actually recommended as fences from both the NESC and the Rural Utilities Substation Guide, the RUS. Chugatch is considered a rural utility. Chain link fences are recommended because they are the easiest type of fence to maintain and to ground. Grounding is one of the things that Colin talked about in his, in the staff report on why we talked about gates and why those, we would like to be a different material if possible specifically excluded from the ornamental fence requirement because they move. When things move through an electric field, that can cause problems if it's not grounded properly. So grounding in a substation is extremely important. The ground grid, in fact, extends 3 feet outside of a substation fence. That is part of the IEEE and the NEC, or the NESC requirements for grounding. So safety is the first thing we think of at Chugatch. That is our number one priority. So I just want to reiterate that I think the commissioners were considering that in their comments before about that. And it is true, the Title 21 does not mention any of the requirements that we have to follow. And the RCA, the Alaska, the Regulatory Commission of Alaska, has actually adopted the latest edition of the NESC for us to follow. So we, I believe, are actually required to follow the NESC recommendations. It's not something that we have adopted on our own. The RCA requires it of us, I believe. So I think I have gone over most of our comments that we wrote into our letter to Colin. But I will mention this. Chugatch was before the commission a few years ago on the Bar Substation. And the community actually requested we not put back a wooden fence there. They did not like it. It got graffiti too often. They preferred having a chain link fence with slats because it was not a graffiti target like a wooden fence would be.
Thank you. Time is now up.
Oh, okay.
I do have a follow-up question, however. You mentioned that chain link is kind of the go-to standard for substations. However, are other options available that would meet the requirements of proposed code?
Yeah, there are other options available, but it's, and I've looked into this. There are some options that they use in the Lower 48 that are difficult to obtain in Alaska. The shipping costs up here are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars to get these up here. So they are not feasible to use up here. It's too expensive. Then there's wooden fences, which we can use, but have been targets for graffiti in the past. And we've had, we've had comments from people who live around them that they do not like the wooden fences because they're graffitied. Chugatch, we coat our fences with a non-conductive paint, which means that graffiti does not just wash off. You have to repaint the fence every time. And so people who have lived around these substations don't like that because it takes a while to get the graffiti off because you have to repaint instead of just wash the fence off. So they have preferred something that's not as big a target for graffiti. Then there's things like cement walls, but that cannot be, that can be unattractive as well. Then you get into things that don't really shield the substations such as wrought iron fences or fiberglass fences, things like that. They are options, but they do not shield. And if that's the purpose of the ornamental fence is to shield the substation, then it wouldn't really meet that requirement.
All right, we also have a question from Commissioner Looney.
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the chain link fence with the plastic slats. Do you know if that meets the requirement or the definition of ornamental fence?
So I actually discussed this with Colin and tried to see if we could get a chain link fence with slats listed as an ornamental fence. And he wasn't sure that that was the way that they wanted to go. But there are, in fact, slats in fences that you can get to look like wood. Or you can do patterns with the slats to make a decorative pattern. You can do all sorts of things. The one that we put at the Bar Substation is a forest green to blend in with the trees around it. around it as much as possible. That was, that was the color that the, that the Northeast Community Council liked, so that's the color we went with. But you can do all sorts of things with slats now. They have ones that look like wood. You can pick it in a bunch of different colors. You can do patterns with them, things like that. But it, I, I believe it is specifically excluded as, as an ornamental fence. But if possible, we would, we would be 100% willing to do that for substation fences is chain-link fence with slats.
Thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue.
I have a question from Commissioner Strike.
Commissioner Strike, go ahead.
Thank you. And follow-up on the chain-link fence, and understand that term is used very, very broadly, and there's different definitions and categorizations of chain-link fence. So, much of that depends on the mesh and the mesh size of the fence. But more pertinent to the chain-link is, is it non-climbable or anti-climb fencing? And some chain-link fence is and some is not by definition and by, and by engineering. So, when I refer to the chain-link fence for the purpose of this particular use, I would think that we're talking non-climb or anti-climb chain-link fence, not the typical four-inch mesh that, you know, even an adult can put their toe hold in and climb up on the fence. Do you agree with that?
That actually, that is, that is a fair point, and so, that is part of the reason Chugatch does do barbed wire at the top of our fences. But slats actually help with that because then you can't get toe holds. You have to rip out the whole slat to do that, things like that, and people don't want to do that with, we haven't had very much trouble with people climbing fences. We've had trouble people, with people in other cases, but climbing, we haven't seen a huge amount of. But that is, that is something we think about as well to keep the, the chain-link fences from having toe holds and things like that. But the slats do actually help with that as well.
Isn't that specifically covered in the NSE, NESC or NEFC code?
Uh...
The non-climb or anti-climb?
I have to say that I'm, I'm looking at the NESC right now, and I have, I cannot find that section on anti-climb.
I don't have it in front of me, and I perused it over the last week as we got ready for this, and I saw the term used a number of times.
And you could, you could be right, and I, and I'm sorry, but I, I, I'm trying to find it to confirm what you're saying.
Okay. And, and so, it is in that terminology that when we use the term chain-link, I think that anytime we use that term as it relates to substations or utility substations, that when we're dealing with an exterior fence, not the interior fencing that may be used, that, that fencing, you know, is non-climbing or anti-climb. And that's where I'm coming from when I talk about not using chain-link, or using a chain-link fence that is non-climb or anti-climb. And I don't see that here. I mean, I, when I drive around town, I see a whole mixed use of different types of fences. And it's, I think the last fence, and I'm going off of memory, and you probably have this right there, that largest substation that went up on O'Malley Road across from Luther Kane Park. I, I want to say that that is a, can, I'm not going to say. Can you tell me what kind of fence that is?
Um, there is, there's actually a portion that's the gate that's chain-link, and then there's, there's a portion that is a wood fence. That's Hayne Substation on, up on O'Malley at the corner of O'Malley and Hayne.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. And that is my concern, is that we ensure that the code addresses, when we address fence, that we address it back to the code, NESC code, which we don't. But if we're not going to, then we, from a safety standpoint and security standpoint, that we should be referencing either some steel cable reinforced, chain-link, or non-climb or anti-climb type fencing.
Yeah. So, so that actually, it brings up a good point. For sections of the code, and I'm sorry that I don't have them off the top of my head, but for transmission poles, it talks about that transmission poles have to follow the safety standards as required for the IEEE or NESC or whatever standards we have to, we have to meet. For utility substations, no safety standards are ever mentioned in Title 21.
And I agree with that. And that's, that's why my earlier comment that before we began the public testimony was that I felt that these types of fencing requirements should be addressed outside of Title 21 in its own subsection or in its own section to identify this type of fencing requirement. So, I leave that to the staff, and I know the matter before us here though is we're finally getting your allowed 10-foot fences, so I'll move on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We also have a question from Commissioner Krishna.
Yeah, I have a clarifying question. Thank you for speaking. My question is about conformance to the NESC. Could you just confirm that fences other than chain-link, so for example, a wooden fence like you've mentioned at several substations, or any other type of fence that you have used or think might be possible under these sort of ornamental standards would still allow your substations to conform to NESC code?
Sure. So, I, I do not know of any substations that Chugatch has besides chain-link, wooden, and possibly cement. There are substations outside of Alaska that use other materials, but none in Alaska that I know of. We have used wooden fences in substations, but not ever wooden gates because those are, those, because of hinges and things like that, it is, it is difficult to ground wooden, wooden fence hinges and things like that and still meet safety standards. They're called step and touch potentials, basically saying from the IEEE, you have to meet these certain voltage requirements with grounding. And so, hinges and things are very important, hence our comment on gates not being ornamental. They have been done at other, at substations in the past, and our comment on that, we've done them, people have, have ended up disliking them because they become graffiti targets, and also they're at least double, if not triple, the price of a chain-link fence to put in. So, they end up costing our consumers more because that, we don't have profit to take that out of. Because we're not-for-profit, that just comes directly out of consumers' pockets. That just gets added to bills whenever, whenever we have things like that. So, we have gotten comments in the past that a few years go by and consumers don't like the wooden fences because they become graffiti targets.
Commissioner Krishna, do you have any other questions?
I don't, thank you.
All right. Seeing no other questions in the queue, I would just like to thank you for your testimony and your time.
This is Jared Gardner. I've got one quick question.
Oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
Sorry, thank you. A question with respect to slats. I don't have a lot of, I guess, exposure to the variety of options for the slats, but I have seen just at various places around town, what are maybe some form of plastic or I don't know what's materials, but slats that have, over time, have kind of broken away and left gaps and look rather unsightly. And I'm just wondering what your experience has been with the slats and the materials that you've used in terms of any upkeep or maintenance required for them.
Sure. A lot of fences that we have come across are old, and you're right, sometimes the fence slats can break. What typically happens though is we try and replace those fence slats as we see them so that the substation remains shielded. But you're right, things do happen. Most of the time, what I've seen are vinyl slats. There are a few other materials, and as it goes along, they're coming out with more and more materials for slats, making them thicker for industrial usage so things like, like breakage of slats don't happen as easily. So, that it is something that, that has been sort of commented on and become a, something of importance in the fence industry in the last couple of years. So, as we're putting in new fences, I'm seeing less of that sort of breakage in slats. But again, if a fence is only a couple of years old, you're going to have less breakage than in a fence that's 20 years old. And that is actually an issue that we're having, a lot of our substations are getting closer to the 20-year or more age. The Bar substation was originally built in 1963 when we rebuilt it a couple of years ago, so it was 55 years old when we rebuilt it. So, you're right, as substations get older, but this is something that we've been looking into more and more, on keeping those slats unbroken or replaced when, when they do break. But I, on these new types of slats that they've been coming out with, I haven't seen as much breakage. But it, again, they're much newer, so if you, if we're 10 years down the line, that might be a different answer for you.
Okay. And do you feel like you've been able to, or to what extent have you been able to maintain that upkeep or stay on top of it as far as broken slats are concerned?
We try to as much as possible. Our substations are unmanned, so we, we don't have personnel in them every day, but we do do a substation inspection and, of the equipment and everything in there. So, that is something that they note when they go to substations, and so we try to replace those as, as we see them to keep things looking nice.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I believe now there are no further questions in the queue, so I will thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Hodges, did you have anything further?
Yes, a couple of quick things. I appreciate Ms. Reed's comments. They're very, they're very helpful in crafting this ordinance and identifying a couple of things we had overlooked, like the importance of chain-link gates as an option for part of the, you know, the movable part of the fence and, you know, the, the restriction of the ornamental fence requirement to residential zoning districts versus industrial and commercial. I did want to just emphasize that through this amendment, we are not adding any, proposing to add any additional requirements for substations, electrical utility substations in Title 21. What it is intended to do is allow electrical utility substations to build the fence that they need in almost all, you know, in a lot, most situations are in situations outside of residential districts without going through a design variance and only have to go through one entitlement process. And then, in residential districts, they would, there would be a higher standard of fencing required, or they could go through a design variance just like they do today. So, again, to emphasize, we're not proposing any new requirements on electrical utility substations that do not exist today. I would also go back to two things really quickly. I believe there is a question earlier on from, I believe, Commissioner Gardner. One of the commissioners asked about a subsection that would hopefully still apply to the new subsection, the proposed subsection G. And I looked through code, and I just confirmed that it would, it would definitely still apply in terms of the fencing landscaping being required to be outside of a fence, provided it was in a residential zoning district, or, sorry, a non-residential zoning district. And finally, just to remind the commission, if you have any questions about this, please feel free to let me know, but just the wording that would include if the electrical utility substation abuts or is within a residential zoning district, I would highly recommend to add that wording if the commission chooses. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, this is Seth. I have a question.
Sorry, Commissioner Gardner's in the queue first.
Oh, thanks. I guess my question is, so, I, I guess I do view this in a way as adding a new requirement as it relates to the residential or substations that are in or adjacent residential, if we're kind of understanding this additional height as being necessary in light of snow in order to comply with these, with the NESC requirements. And I, to me, it makes sense to have some effort to, to have the, both the higher fencing and, I think somewhere in the report it made a reference to kind of increased intensity of usage for these substations as they get upgraded, to try to conceal that to the extent possible. And I'm just wondering, and I guess along the lines of what Commissioner Strike was talking about earlier, that ornamental seems like a little bit of a forced fit for that purpose. And I'm wondering what other options there are or were considered as, as a way to provide some visual buffering other than, than the ornamental requirement?
Yeah, I think that's a good point in the context of there being a commonly-used fence out of 10 feet through the NESC that the ornamental fence requirement would, you know, could be considered to be sort of an additional requirement. I think that's a fair point. The reason we chose ornamental fencing is because it is not prescribing any specific type of fence. There are really so many varieties of fences that, you know, could be used in this situation. Nothing in Title 21 or in that definition, and it's defined in Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 2115. There's nothing that would prohibit creative or, you know, different types of fencing that, that could meet that definition. It's, it's a very broad definition. And so, we were intending to reference that to maximize flexibility in terms of what can be implemented as an enclosure that meets that definition and also, but it precludes chain-link, which is something that we were intending to do for residential districts in this, in this proposed amendment. So, that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, just one quick follow-up.
Sure.
Does the, I assume then the intent also with that preclusion of chain-link is to include chain-link with slats? That's your reading and intent?
Yes, that would preclude that, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And I believe there was a question on the telephone?
Yeah, from Seth.
All right. Commissioner Anderson, go ahead.
Yeah, for Colin, from Chugatch's representative, it sounds like they would like to have the opportunity to use chain-link or metal gates. Do you feel like ornamental fence is sufficient to allow them to use a metal-type gate? Or do we need to make an exception for their gates?
So, to answer that directly, they, the proposed amendment has recommended a change to, in the text, to allow, to apply the ornamental standard only to stationary sections of the fence. So, chain-link gates would, would absolutely be allowed under this amendment. And actually, the O'Malley, so there's a substation, electrical substation on O'Malley Road that is constructed with, as a wooden enclosure, but includes a chain-link gate. So, that is actually already being done today also, and that was one of the things that was very helpful in terms of Ms. Reed directing our attention to that.
Right. I see that. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner, is that another question in the queue?
It is, yeah. Sorry, one, it just occurred to me. And can you just remind me, when we're talking about the standards to get a variance, is, how relevant is the cost savings that would go along with it? In other words, if there were a substation fence that was going up next to a residential district and the utility was trying to get a variance in order to allow, for example, chain-links with slats, what, what would be the primary factors that would be considered for that?
Cost would not be a major factor. I can actually look up right now the, the standards for the design variance. That would be helpful.
Yeah, if it's right, if it's right there, I would be curious to know. Thanks.
Okay. So, the variant standards that, for a design variance that goes before the Urban Design Commission are A through G. And that is, you know, A, proposal alternative achieves the intent of the subject design standard to the same or better degree than the subject standard. So, it's focused on the intent. The second is the alternative achieves the goals and policies of the comp plan to the same degree or better. C, the proposal alternative results and benefits to the community that are equivalent to or better than the compliance of the subject standard. D, the variance of granted will adversely affect the use of adjacent property as permitted in this code. E, the variance of granted does not change the character of the zoning district where the property is located, is in keeping the intent of this code, and does not permit a use or otherwise, that would not otherwise be permitted. And then the last two, so F, persons with disabilities are provided that access is required. And G, the variance of granted does not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the people of the municipality. So, the standards, as they don't, you know, today for fence height increases, they don't address cost directly. But they do allow for some nuance in the sense that if there was a fence being located in a residential zoning district, but it is surrounded by trees or vegetation or is not visible from other properties, it is, you know, it has setbacks that put it in a place where it is unobtrusive, then that would be, you know, a strong consideration in that type of design variance. But it does not specifically discuss cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no further questions from staff, what is the will of the body? Sorry, I believe there is a question for staff. Commissioner Looney?
I guess, well, it's more just procedure. Was there any testimony from the public on this topic?
Yes, there was. I don't know if you had the same problem I did, but my packet was not sent to me completely. I was sent a small packet with only seven pages. But in looking online, the full packet contained, it was about 19 pages long. And I did not discover that until I was here, but was able to read through the comments that were submitted online.
I see it now. I have it pulled up. Thank you.
This is Seth. Can I make a motion to approve?
Um, yes. Go, you can go ahead and state your motion.
Uh, for case 2020-0122, Title 21 text amendment, revision of fence height for electric utility substations, I move to approve with one text amendment to include, let me check if I get this right, utility substation abuts or is within residential zoning districts.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I believe that is seconded by Commissioner Krishna. Would you like to speak to your motion at this time?
Um, yeah. I think this amendment, as proposed, addresses a conflict with the NESC and design variances that can be avoided, especially in rural or non-residential zones. And it allows the 10-foot height, but provides an additional restriction within residential zones to protect the residential character by using ornamental fencing.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Not seeing anyone else in the queue at this time, I will speak. One thing I would like to point out is, I think it's important to note that this requirement of the ornamental fencing would be applicable only in areas as stated in Commissioner Anderson's motion that are within or but residential areas. And I think there's a good reason to have additional design standards within a residential area, trying to make it more of a community feel. That's something that's very standard and common throughout Title 21. So, I don't necessarily see anything wrong with requiring additional standards. And if there are additional standards, they are thereby more expensive standards. Also, in looking at NESC-approved fencing, it does look like there are options for vertical slatted metal fencing on gates with, with concrete as Ms. Reed mentioned in her testimony. There are also options with wooden standards. She mentioned additionally that Chugatch does do that in certain locations. While graffiti can happen in any area, I don't necessarily see that as being a convincing reason to not allow a solid surface when the, it seems like a main point is to be kind of restricting the vision into those substations. One thing that I wish I had more information on is the NESC standards themselves. And I wish that we were able to get into more of that. However, I see this being a positive direction towards not having every single fence design needing to go through approval and rather allowing those 10-foot high restrictions to, to not have that variance required. So, those, for those reasons, I am at this point going to vote in favor of the motion as stated. But I could see potentially a future in which this fencing ordinance gets further tweaks to have better conformity with NESC to make it even easier in the future for substation fencing to go in. But at this time, I'm inclined to vote in favor of the motion. Commissioner Gardner, you had a comment?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to note that the inclusion of the, let me find my language here, sorry, the requirement for ornamental fencing, as I noted earlier, I think it, it feels a little bit like an odd fit because the fencing isn't, in many respects, kind of strictly or maybe even primarily ornamental. But I do agree with staff's interpretation that it provides a lot of flexibility in the design and is maybe the best way to get at the goal of providing some sort of visual buffering for residential areas without being too restrictive. And the only real restriction that comes from it is chain link fences. But that doesn't preclude a whole host of other fencing options. And if there are circumstances where the area might have other visual buffering or something else, a variance could also be requested for the ornamental fencing requirement.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Commissioner Looney?
Yes, thank you. Actually, I'm probably going to echo a lot of what Commissioner Gardner just said and what you said, Chair. But essentially, you're right. I think that the, we could be tweaking the definition of ornamental fence here, but the, really the, the primary goal of this is just try to, to facilitate these taller fences in commercial areas and, or non-residential areas for sure, but in define what you need as ornamental for residential. But what I see is, is by leaving enough flexibility in the ornamental fence, it allows the fence to be designed for in particular needs. I think before our body, we actually had a, a project that had a, very near homes and there was concern about the, the noise level of transformers from a substation. So, there's definitely ways to, to address noise levels with the fence design, with a solid surface or like a concrete or, or something that could reduce the, the noise. So, I don't really want to go down the rabbit hole of trying to define exactly what this fence needs to be by, but near residential areas by having ornamental requirement, I think that's good enough right now. And the overall goal is to try to make it so that for these taller fences will be allowed without, without having to jump through all the hoops. I think we at least can, can solve that now, today. That's why I'll, I'll support this, this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Looney. Would anyone else like to speak to the motion at this time? All right. I will call for a vote. Commissioner Strick?
Yes.
Commissioner Spinelli? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Looney?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Quinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Krishna?
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. That motion passes. Before we move on to our next item, which Commissioner Strick would be jumping the gun for, I just want to thank Commissioner Looney for their service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just as a personal matter, Commissioner Looney joined the commission right around the same time I did. And he has been so helpful for me in just being such a good member on the commission, doing a lot of research. I know we will really miss all of his transportation expertise. I think one thing that is very nice is when you know the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission really care about the future of Anchorage and really want to see Anchorage be a better place. And that's something that I always knew Commissioner Looney wanted to do, whether we would agree or disagree on the actual end result vote. But I just want to thank Commissioner Looney for all of his time on the commission. And I'm not going to necessarily think that he's never going to make his way back here. So, I'm just going to throw out, I hope Commissioner Looney finds his way back on the Planning and Zoning Commission at some point. So, thank you, Commissioner Looney, for all your time.
Well, thank you for the nice words. All right. Can I move adjourned then?
Sorry, what was that?
Oh, am I beating Commissioner Strick if I moved adjourned?
I think you should can. I would like you to second your own motion too if it weren't against the rules. But I think we have a second by Commissioner Winchester. And seeing no objections at this time, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian, for your service.